Call the order. The City of Lawrence Common Council Administration Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Today is September 18th, 5:00 PM. First thing on the agenda, councilors, to discuss. The first thing on here is the proposal number seven, which is the appropriations in tax rates for the 2020 budget year. Controller Fenwick, you come up and address us with these proposal number seven.
Good evening. I'd like to play our video again just as a refresher as to kind of the highlights as to what the budget does contain. And then we have a little presentation after that as well, and then we'll go from there. That's all right?
Sounds great.
I'm 64 years old. I lived in Lawrence for 58 of those 64 years. To say that I love my city is perhaps an understatement. I'm never going to move away. But I think the thing I'm proudest of is that when we're done, we will have left certainly an imprint and a legacy on making the city better. I hope that whenever we're done here, people will look back and say, these were the beginning, kind of the golden years for Lawrence. We began to see growth. We began to see all kinds of positive things happening in the city because of what happened. I think one of the reasons why we've been able to be so successful is that we have found ways to get things done in an efficient manner to save money for the city. Since 2016, when I first took over, we have quadrupled the city's operating reserve.
Coming into office, it was inadequate at best. If you looked at the previous years, that reserve had bounced up and down, and in a couple of years, was actually virtually zero.
Most cities in Indiana actually have to borrow money on January 1st to begin paying their employees. They don't have their tax distribution yet. That usually comes in June.
Borrowing money in a rising interest rate environment can cost upwards of $300,000. The city of our size shouldn't be reliant on borrowing to get through the year.
Jason and I set a goal of 20% of operating reserve so that if the city does encounter something, we can actually take care of that without having to borrow money.
We should be able to start earning money with our cash on hand. The net difference between no longer having to borrow money plus now earning interest has been a positive swing of almost $500,000 a year at our disposal to use that we didn't have otherwise.
We have to be able to think ahead. What are the true needs of every citizen in the city of Lawrence? What do we want to get done in 2020? Public safety has been and will continue to be my number one priority in Lawrence. The last three and a half years, we've upgraded our departments, not only in terms of their equipment that they're using, but also in terms of the men who actually work in our departments.
We will set a milestone in our 2020 budget where the entire fire fleet will have been replaced over the last four years, which is a big accomplishment given how expensive those apparatus can be. We also set out to put the police on a five-year vehicle replacement program, and we will be continuing that in 2020.
We're going to provide a 6% raise for our public safety employees, and it'll be the highest raise that many of them have ever gotten in their life. They certainly deserve that. We will continue an emphasis on our streets. Our charge is to go out and to identify what roads are going to need to be paved in the future, what roads need to be paved right now. We will also continue quality of life and park improvements. We've raised the budget for the parks each of the last three years. We'll continue to do that. We're very proud of our 11 parks that we have in the city of Lawrence. We're proud of the fact that we have a partnership with the State Park of Fort Harrison over there. So we'll continue to do that and to make sure that parents and children and so on have places to enjoy living here in the city of Lawrence. We'll also certainly take the next step forward in being able to establish a truly connected city. It's hard to do that with a built-out city like Lawrence is. We're going to set aside nearly half a million dollars in the next year to begin to build more trails and be a connected city. We want to be able to say that every citizen at any point in our city can actually walk to be able to get to our city center right here on the old Fort Harrison Reuse authority property. All of those things are very important for our city's growth. Our last census was at 47,000. We believe we're over 50,000 right now. We want to keep that number keep going up.
Our 2020 proposed budget is a balanced budget. Our anticipated, in total, general fund reserve will be in excess of $7 million at the end of 2019. While maintaining a 20% reserve level, we're able to free up almost $1.8 million for one-time expenditures in 2020 while still maintaining that 20% operating reserve, which by comparison, the state of Indiana's operating reserve is 13.3% of its budgeted expenditures. So we're extremely healthy at our 20% level and still able to free up almost $1.8 million for capital expenditures.
For the third consecutive year, we've won the Government Finance Officers Association Award. It is the highest award you can win for budget preparation. To do that three years in a row is a pretty amazing accomplishment, and Jason and his staff should all be certainly receive a big pat on the back for having accomplished that three years in a row. It's never happened before.
The next thing I'd like to present, if you have the budget book itself, would be This is a breakdown of the revenue sources for the general fund, and really the point of this page is our mix of revenue is pretty much the same as it has been the last couple of years. About 42% of general fund revenue is from property taxes between payment in lieu of taxes, local income taxes, and the trash fees. I mean, that comprises about, well, north of 75% of total general fund revenue, but that mix is roughly the same as it has been the last three years.
Jason, where's the public safety tax in that pie? Which does that fall under?
It is not in that, in the little yellow slice of the pie, excuse me, the red slice of the pie, is the county option income tax, but the public safety tax is in Fund 224, the public safety tax fund, so that...
It's not part of the general fund?
Correct. It's not.
Okay.
And then looking at our proposed uses of funds from the general fund, 72% of the budget is dedicated to public safety, which is, again, roughly the same percentage that it has been the last three years. The next biggest use of funds is the payment for trash pickup, followed by funding for the Parks Department. So roughly speaking, this also has, on a percentage basis, remained about the same over the last three years as well. And as the video mentioned, it is a balanced budget. This is our fourth consecutive balanced budget. You can see on this page where the total revenue is roughly equal to our total proposed expenditures, and that reserved operating fund balance does not change, which is at 20% of budgeted expenditures. And I think this is probably the most important takeaway with our 2020 budget proposal. As you can see, our reserves in years past were fluctuating, and we've been on a consistent uptick in building up that operating reserve to the point where we can now have a conversation about reserved operating fund and unreserved operating fund. Reserve portion is that up to 20% number that we really don't want to go below for a variety of reasons, emergencies, plus no longer needing to borrow, which is, this will be the third budget where we don't need to borrow for cash flow purposes throughout the year. But that green portion of the reserve, if you will, is unreserved and could be freed up for one-time expenditures. And so what we're proposing in the 2020 budget is to reduce that by about $1,008,000 for those one-time expenditures, but that still leaves about an $800,000 cushion between the 20% reserve. So we're still projecting to be above that. So if something happens or revenues are a little light, we still have a pretty ample cushion there.
I was going to ask you, Jason. No, go ahead, go ahead, Tom, because my question's kind of the next part of this.
Yeah, it's to this. So on page 42, I think this is what you're tracking to, Jason, which is the 0101 General Fund.
Um, reserve balance, yep.
So 2017, net revenue, 1.2; 18, 2.2; projected, 1.3. So this 20, you see where I'm at?
You said on page 42?
Yes, where it shows the general fund statement of revenue and expenses.
Mm-hmm.
The total revenue, 25 million; total expenses, 25 million. So that's where you're leveling off.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm tracking with that. Okay.
Just a couple other highlights on the Parks Department. If you go back to 2016, the adopted general fund budget for the Parks Department was roughly $975,000. The 2020 proposed budget's a little north of 1.5 million. So we have increased Parks funding every year, at least for the last four budgets. Cumulatively, that number is 2.8 million of additional funding for the Parks Department. If you look at the 2020 proposed budget, it is down from 2019. There are two factors playing in there. One, we had put $300,000 in this year's budget to resurface Harmon Way, so that is a one-time event. And then secondly, we are proposing the Lee Road Trail, and so the funding that would have potentially been there is going to Lee Road Trail, which is quality of life and related. So it's in a different budget, not the Parks Department budget. And then on the Street Department, similarly, in 2016, the adopted budget for the Street Department was 2.6 million. The 2020 proposed budget, which includes two funds, the NVH Fund and the LRS Fund, is 5.2 million, so nearly doubling from 2016. The cumulative funding increase for the Street Department is, over that four-year period, has been 10.3 million. Obviously, if you've been driving around Lawrence, you know Lee Road's about to be completely repaved, and we've also done Sunnyside and two others this year, but that's with the 2020 budget, almost $7 million in paving in the last four years. In this budget as well, these two are related. We're proposing to add two additional employees at the Street Department for 2020. Coupled with that, we are proposing to create a garage fund for next year. That garage fund would be its own separate fund for all expenses related to maintaining vehicles for the city. All employee costs, all repair costs, et cetera, would be funded out of the garage fund. Then each department will essentially be billed for their use of the garage. Previously, the Street Department covered the entire cost of that absence, some parts and other things, in departmental budgets. So proposing the garage fund allows us to then add two additional staff members at the Street Department.
Can I ask a question back to Parks? So if I understood you correctly, we revised the budget to a little bit over 1.9 in 2019. We're proposing a little bit over 1.5 in 2020, and I think I hear you saying that $323,000 is basically, they'll remain flat.
Yeah.
Saying that that $323,000 does not really take anything away from Parks.
That's correct. It does not take anything from their operations, plus in 2020, Parks is planning to do renovations to Gin Park, the facility out there, plus a new playground at Alexander Park. So they're continuing to reinvest in the parks. $300,000 of that was Harmon Way, what we had put in the 2019 budget. Additionally, to the 6% that's proposed for public safety salary increases, we are also proposing an up to 5% salary increase for civilian employees. So that is included in the proposed budget. And then lastly, these are the other funds that comprise the 2020 budget.
Okay, Jason, I might have missed the, can you tell me what page the fund increase for, or the proposed increase for police and fire, what page they are reflected on in the budget?
There's not one page that shows them all together. So police and fire are funded out of general fund.
Right.
And then out of public safety tax fund as well, and then fire additionally out of the EMS fund.
So where will I see the 6%?
You will see it primarily in the public safety tax fund under salaries, and then a little bit in the general fund under salaries for both police and fire.
Page 132.
Actually, if you want to move to page 133, you'll see on the far-right column at the top, under regular, that increase.
Okay. The 623?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And then that perf increase as well is related to that increase.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I had a question now that I'm looking at that. Why is the overtime, oh, it's an up or is it down?
It's out of this fund, it's slightly up.
Okay, it's up. That's good, that's good. And with the increased salaries, the perf has to go up?
Yes. And then in the book itself, on page 37 and 8, is just a summary by fund of all the funds that make up our 2020 proposal.
Jason, on that page 38, the 327 Bond III Municipal Building Corp., is that then the police station?
No, that's, the primary debt is for this building.
This building? Oh, municipal, okay.
Yep.
So where is the bond payment for the police station? Oh, it's not going to start until 2022?
We have, we can bond out at any time it's completed, but I think the ordinance was, I think, through 2022, so between now and then.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
And effectively, the way that was structured, because the building corp bonds mature around that same timeframe, so that would basically slide in and replace that with some of the other debt that had previously matured as well.
So I think, is it okay, Tyrell? I'm just, I think we're just sort of skipping around with the questions that we have, if that's okay. Let me see where I saw this. Okay. And I may just have forgotten this and really just need you to refresh my memory, but the pilot payment?
Yes.
In 2018 was 2.9, projected 3.1 in 19 and 20. Tell me where the difference, where that difference came from.
If you remember in the, I believe it was the bond ordinance that was passed in 2017 for water, it kind of reshaped how the pilots paid. So previously, it'd been paid kind of out of operating expenses. That ordinance basically then said, you can't pay the pilot till you fund operations, fund all your debt service, move it down to capital improvement. And then it allowed for it to be calculated on a formula based on the asset value of the utility with the phase one projects being complete, Rich Art, and those others that bumped up the, slightly, the assessed value.
Okay.
So that's the increase.
Okay, thank you. And then on that same page, let's see. Where are you projecting to get the $76,000 increase for license and permits? Or not quite, it's a drop, actually.
It is.
Decrease is what I meant to say.
So we've had, just in, I'd say, kind of the refocus on that area, there have been certain licensing and permitting areas that have kind of dropped off this summer. It is what it is in that case. So to be conservative, assuming it carries forward into next year, I didn't want to be overly aggressive on those. We're optimistic that we'll be at least closer to the 2019 projected, but just trying to be conservative on that number.
And there's a big decrease, an even larger decrease from 2018 to 2019 for ordinance violations. Where's that? I mean, that's a huge decrease.
Is that the line above? Is it, or would that be the 911?
It's too under, it's too under license and permits on page 42.
What's, what number?
It just says ordinance viol-
It doesn't have a number.
It doesn't have an, it just says ordinance violations.
So we had-
0101 General Fund.
Right.
Right below 911 fees.
So we had $112,000 in 18.
Correct.
And then 236, and then back down to 131.
Yeah.
On that one, we have the false alarm permit fees, which is through a third-party vendor, Cry Wolf, and that was the increase in 2019. And again, just, you know, being somewhat conservative, back that number off based on those previous years outside of 2019. If you look at from 14 to 18, roughly speaking, it's probably on average about 150, and I'm a little under that.
Okay, Jason, for my benefit, please, explain to me again why there's an increase. Did you say for the false alarms?
Yep.
I just have a, Mr. Chair, is this just like a-
Yeah, just go ahead. No, no, please.
I just have a general question, and I know we've talked about this over the last, gosh, seven years since I've been on this council. Is the concern for this unfunded liability, particularly with respect to retiring police officers and firefighters? I know that there was an attempt to try to create a fund that was restricted only for this purpose, and it didn't quite happen. So right now, these, I don't know how many retired this year, but our, first off, how much have we paid out of this liability this year? And where did that money come from? And then because we don't have this in a structure in this budget for next year, I just think this is just going to continue to increase because it has, this conversation has happened for the last seven years, and we just keep funding it out of cash. So what's, what's this?
Yep.
Where's the money?
Yeah, how are you, how are you funding that?
Well, two things. It's not gone away. That's still probably, I would say, our biggest challenge as a city overall is how to address that, and I still think the best way to address that is setting money aside. But that money should only be able to be used to pay these payouts in the future. So how are we addressing it now? So this year's not been a good year for that. We've had, I think, over $350,000 that we've spent already in those, and we still have at least one or two more to go. So it's not out of the, around the possibility that number could be, you know, north of half a million by the end of the year. In fact, if you look at on page 44, the line item down there, 413011, Other Employee Benefits.
My lord.
That's where we pay that. There are other things being paid out of there as well, but the bulk of that is for these payouts. So you can see in the 2020 budget, there's $600,000 that's been budgeted in anticipation of that. I think there may be also a number, if you go to page 133, there's another 140 there. And again, most of that is for payout. So between those two, I mean, rounding up, we're near $750,000. Now, that's in anticipation. Hopefully, we are better than that in terms of what we actually do have to pay out, but we've asked every budget year of known retirements, and we, if we know what, whom that may be, we know what the amount may be as well. But right now, that's, you know, as you can see, I mean, that number is, it's a big number.
So 2020, sorry, Tom, it's 2020, so 2020 is known retirements to this point.
And-
And some cushion.
And some unknowns, because usually, I would say, the last two years, we've had a pretty good handle with the knowns, but we still have had three or four unknowns. So, yeah.
So we're talking a total of $750,000 between general and public safety. Right now, as I'm looking at this budget, that's just going to be financed out of cash, out of our reserves. Mr. Chair, I know this is probably late in the game, but we've talked about this. I know you've been a part of these discussions. Regardless of what happens in the future, two, three, four, five years from now, I think we have a, this is not going away.
No.
Based on some of the longevity and the people that I know that have been with the city for a long time, gosh, I'd be happy to take a look at this and maybe get something to this committee. It's probably too late for this budget, I'm guessing, or?
I think, you know, we've got the funding in the budget for-
You can create a restricted fund via ordinance at any time, as long as you have something to fund it with, right?
Which, if we're funding it in a budget, it's just a matter of moving that money over to this restricted fund. And I think, I think if I'm, my memory serves me right, it's a pretty tight restriction, so Jason Fenwick can't go in and say, well, I need to appropriate this money out for X. It can only be to fund-
Yes.
-these retirements.
Yeah, and my concern would be if it's not that tight, then who's the, say, 30, whenever down the road, that money goes away, and the city is back in the same problem? Because I don't think this is a problem that's going away for at least the next decade. We did make some changes last year where it kind of stopped the bleeding, if you will, but that'll be a 20-year-down-the-road benefit.
Well, one last question. Do you, because right now, it seems, but doesn't seem, but it's apparent by the data that 70% of it is tied to the general and 40 is to the public safety. But do you start to see that shifting over as firefighters 10, 15 years from now retire at- to see that shifting over as firefighters 10, 15 years from now retire, that more of that's going to shift over to?
It's a, it's really a collective problem, and most of it is public safety, whether it's out of general fund or out of public safety tax, most of it is public safety.
Oh, okay.
So, given the magnitude of the number, you know, it's coming out of both.
Makes sense, given it's 80% of our budget. Okay, I see what you mean.
I mean, to a lesser extent, out of general fund, could be parks. We did have, if you remember last year, three communications employees leave, and that was an unexpected leave and a big, a bigger number for that budget. But, yeah, it's predominantly public safety.
Well, earlier this year, though, you did bring a ordinance in front of us for the restricted fund, right? That didn't pass. It was earlier this year?
It was last year.
Last year.
It was last year?
Yep.
Okay, okay, time flies. Yeah, well, maybe that's something.
It was this time last year.
It was this time last year?
Yeah.
Yeah. I definitely support it personally. I see the overwhelming problem. We want to protect, protect our public safety workers, and hopefully, that's something that maybe we could bring to the council, we could bring to the council again, and hopefully, people will see that it's only getting worse and that we have to, you know, be responsible and do something related to that, Tom. So I agree with it, and hopefully, we'll see something.
So Chairman, I have a quick question. So, I mean, legally, can that be funded via the Internal Services? Meaning, if you have, you know, you know, they've already, you know, stated their intention to retire in December, but you know, for instance, police is going to have three, fire is going to have two, could that be captured in the Internal Services Fund?
I would say no, but to your, kind of maybe where you're going with that, I think what, what we, as a city, should do, and flash forward five years from now, and let's say we had this in place and we were funding it, what we should be doing is charging every department each year in the budget an amount to then contribute to the fund.
That's exactly what I mean.
We can track it departmentally in that restricted fund, and then when they have a payout need, we can use their funds to pay payout.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Right.
Yep.
Because I don't know if one department's older, you know, if the average age of a fireman is younger than the police or that, I don't know, but that would, might come into play.
But they would only contribute to an actual retirement, so that could, right, I mean, it could be different year over year, and it's only going to be based on the information that you have at that time to put in the budget with maybe something built in, 10% to 15% for those unknowns.
I mean, I get a quarterly list of everybody, and here's our total liability, and on a going-forward budget basis, it'd be pretty easy to say, okay, you know, if we're going to set it up right so that, you know, whatever the time down the road is, seven years when we say, okay, now we're going to start paying out of this fund, that amount ought to be pretty consistent each year for each department that they need to budget to contribute to it, so that hopefully, you know, whatever the timeframe is decided, seven, 10 years down the road, there's enough in there to then really alleviate this from operating fund budgeting issues.
So, so based on this list, that you've got a pretty good idea, that 750,000 is from that list, is that a worst-case scenario, or did you, I mean, did you hedge that to?
There's probably a little hedge in there, but like I would have told you last year, yeah, there's definitely hedge in there, and that's probably not the case this year. So it does.
More towards what you think might be more on the money?
Yeah.
Plus or minus?
You can look at the list, and even if there's not a known on there, you can say, all right, you know, if, if I get three, it's likely to be out of, you know, this five, these five employees, and put the amount in there.
So I have one more question. So, I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that there is some type of incentive for police and maybe fire, but I might not be sure about that, you know, to let their department heads know in advance that they're retiring, so that it's a process that we all are aware of and we're prepared for. Is there a similar incentive for city employees?
Um.
And it's not a suggestion, it's a question.
Yeah, the answer would be no. I would say both the police and fire chiefs have, have done a good job of, you know, again, it, no one has to say they're going to retire, and they have brought that up and have communicated what they know and don't know. I mean, there are the drop lists, although you don't necessarily have to notify anybody that you've entered into that. But on the non-public safety side, now granted, you know, if I'm losing sleep at night, it's over the public safety retirements, not?
Right, because of the money.
The rest, but no, it would be, I'm done today, you know, you get noticed, so.
Was the communications that we paid out last year, did that come under public safety or did that come under general fund?
General fund communications.
So that was a situation where you had three city employees, where it was impactful?
To that budget, absolutely, yes, yeah, yep.
Okay.
All right. Well, for time's sake, I think that we need to try to get through these proposals, and so that we can know if we want to make a recommendation to full council. So on proposal number seven, which is the ordinance for appropriation of tax rates for the 2020 budget year, councilors, is that something, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to move for the full council for approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, show of hands. Opposed, no? All right, three all on that one. Okay, so that moves on to council for recommend, full council for recommendation. The next one here is proposal number nine, which is fixing the salaries of officers and employees of the police department and the fire department for the year 2020. Mr. Fenwick, as we look at, to kind of get this started, we got 6% raises across the board for, for our public safety officers. Is there any, councilors, are there any questions that you may have about any of the particular positions? And Jason, is there any changes that we should be aware of in the actual job titles and duties?
6% is about the only?
Across the board, yeah, I didn't see anything.
So, similar to last time, we had salary ordinance, you added 6% to the, minimum and 6% to the top end?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, yes, I would, ask for a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, that proposal number nine. All in favor? Show of hands. Opposed, none? So it's been moved and seconded and approved, that we move this on to full council for recommendation, proposal number nine. All right. Next on the agenda is proposal number 10, which is fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence for year 2020.
Can, one, one thing that was added, and I appreciate you speaking to it, is this director of engineering?
Yes.
And I think, I think what this does is maybe offset perhaps some of the costs that we're paying to outside firms to do some of this work. I'm sure that they're probably charging more than 100 grand, so can you kind of walk this, walk us through what the scope of this role is, or not, I don't want to get detailed, but just?
Sure.
What the intention is for this?
So, obviously, given the financial health that we have, we have a lot of, lot of projects going on, you know, any given day, we have paving, we have work being done at the utility, there's, there's a lot going on. So, we, up to this point, have relied on external engineering to bid out paving projects, you name it. And so, given that we anticipate that level of work to continue and probably even increase from here, we thought, you know, it's probably time now that we do have a director of engineering on staff. The work may not have been warranted for that position two years ago, it certainly is now, and to that point, we do think having that position on staff, well, then, we won't need to rely as much on external engineering to get that done. We'll still always have a need for external engineers, just less so. Plus, we had a director of code enforcement, that position's vacant currently, we will not be filling that position, instead, the director of engineering would be assuming part of that role as well.
They'll also?
Okay, do some code enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, there will be others probably more focused on that, the director of engineering would be kind of the manager of that, that area, but this isn't an additional staff position per se, because we're not hiring for the director of code enforcement now, it would be, the engineering would be in lieu of that.
I don't have last year's in front of me, was there a director of code enforcement in last year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is the planning and building director?
That's a position that's always been in the salary ordinance, but we do not have, that's not been filled and hasn't been since, at least that I know of, 20, well, since 2016, it's not been filled.
Okay.
All right, councilors, I would entertain a motion.
I want to make sure, some time ago, I can't remember, it might have been under last year's budget, but there was some conversations with respect to hermetic EMT and, and some of the challenges that fire was having with losing some of those employees to other departments, other townships, I should say. I'm guessing the chief is, I'm pretty sure the chief has talked to you about this, if I know the chief like I know him. Does this put us now in par from a competitive, so we're not going to be having this conversation that, losing more people because Wayne Township is paying a buck more an hour?
Two things, I think, starting with this year's budget, when we put a salary increase in the ordinance, the chief and I met, and without exceeding in that budget the 3% overall, he was able to give some more and some a little less, which they were happy with, and so the plan for next year would be to do something similar to that, and if you want to expand on that anymore?
Basically, when, when I talked to Jason, we had, we served, took a survey of all the surrounding departments that offer EMS, and the gap is quite wide for medics, not as wide for EMTs. So Jason allowed us last year to take that 3%, and we also had, we, actually, we had two issues that were brought to our attention. One is that if a medic's been here four years, they were making the same amount as a medic that was just starting.
First year, yeah.
So we stair-stepped that with Jason's help, and we also, what we did, the EMTs are almost toward the top of the pay scale for the county, so last year, we did not give the EMTs a raise, and they were good with that because they understood where their pay was. So we were able to shift almost all that, well, actually, all of it, to, to the medics. This year, Jason has allowed us to do the same thing, so we are giving the EMTs some, you know, we've, we've covered, we've had a meeting with Jason to show what we project, but we don't want to go two years without giving the EMTs a raise either. So, we're, we're taking the money that Jason gave us for the increases and putting more on the medic side, and a little bit to the MT side. Now, that gap still exists, but I believe with Jason allowing us to do that, we are narrowing that gap. So it has gotten better. Is it where it should be? No, but it's, it's a far cry from where it was. So, and we've answered those issues, because that was a big issue about the stair-stepping, which I get it, if somebody's been here and they've got that experience, and then somebody new starts, they, they really shouldn't be making the same. So we've done, we've covered that, but it's been a good means, because there's a labor management now in our civilian side. Those, those communications have gone very well, because before, it was either, you know, standing still or going backwards, and we're definitely making progress, and I think that's, well, that's why the morale is so much better on the civilian side, too, because they see those wheels turning and they know we're trying to get in that direction. So as long as they see us keep growing, they, we've been very fortunate, because those communications have been very positive.
So, that's proposal number 10.
Did you get a second?
No.
You'll make the motion, or I'll second.
Second, so it's been moved and seconded, so take a vote, all in favor of recommending this to full council, proposal number 10? Show of hands. Opposed, none? All right, proposal number 10 to be recommended to full council. We have one more to discuss, which is, no, that's it, I'm sorry, I've got my agendas for this one, sorry. All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, meeting adjourned.